Hello there.
Dave, how was the travels?
Um, the travels were good. It was a very exciting uh coming back. I'll have to tell you about it sometime. Well, your camera seems way clearer than it used to. Did you get a new one?
Yeah, our um new IT director ordered it for me. And I gotta say, I think that looks better and blurry.
No, it's uh yeah, it's remarkable how much crisper the images.
I know.
The new uh IT guys fixing you guys up, huh?
It is awesome to have him on the team. Yeah, he's been great and really um really easy to work with, which has been um fun for all of us. We're not tech savvy.
Oh, good. Yeah, it's nice to have a tech person who can communicate with the non-tech savvy.
Yes, exactly. So we're we're ramping up, which is exciting.
So are we meeting this Thursday?
Uh, for our regular meeting? Yes.
Yeah, okay. Oh, there it is. It's even on the calendar.
Um, I gotta tell you guys that the Nordic Club is having a community center. And I was so tempted to come in late when I get some of that amazing smelling food when I swung by.
Which which club was it?
Coria Nordic Ski Club.
Okay.
Hi, Tom.
Howdy. How's the weather in Southern Oregon?
I don't want to tell you, Tom, because you'll be bummed.
It's actually sunny up here.
I'm good. We've had two beautiful days.
Yeah, yeah, we had some rain here.
Where are you, Tom?
Well, I'm in Vancouver, Washington with my at my sister's house, but we spent the day in Salem. And um we're going to um a wedding tomorrow of a friend of ours, son of a friend of ours. So be back home on Thursday.
Nice.
Yeah, the sun came out here today. It was it was pouring rain yesterday and a little bit this morning.
Well, I hope your friends get some sun tomorrow for the wedding.
Yeah. Me too.
All right, we'll give a few more minutes here. Member Pranav, have you heard um from any council member beside member greater if they're able to attend tonight?
Um, no, I didn't hear. I just texted Darby and Jason. Um, so. But I think we do have quorum if we need to. And we have our new vice chair. He's a brilliant parliamentarian I happen to know.
I feel like this is a trick.
The hardest thing is like getting the date right, the time right, you know, looking at the.
Lord Parry Miller, all that you get us started when you feel ready to get us started.
Okay. So, good evening. It is six oh three. And I will call this Talent Urban Renewal Agency meeting of Tuesday, April eleventh to order. Roll call, please.
Or remember Pranam Raff?
Here.
Or remember Pesezo?
Here.
Or remember Byers?
Here.
Board member Parry Miller?
Here.
Uh, and member writer, clerk, and there's flood are not here, but I'll watch the attendees as soon as they show up. And you have a quorum, Parry Miller, member Parry Miller.
Thank you, Hector. So, hold on, let me go to the agenda. Okay, item two is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Um, do we have any speaker request forms tonight?
I'll double check the public testimony email, and we don't have any.
Okay, thanks. Um, any members of the audience wish to speak? If so, you can raise your hands. Looks like we only have two. So, moving on, um, item number three is consent calendar. Um, which includes three point one, which is a financial packet for February twenty twenty three. Has everyone had a chance to review the packet? You see nodding. Um, any questions for staff? If there are none, I will entertain a motion. Member Byers?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Board member Pranam Raff?
Yes.
Board member Pesezo?
Yes.
Board member Byers?
Yes.
And board member Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And member Byers, your hand is sorry, it's just so you know. Okay, so next is item four, items from the executive director. And four point one is update on development, a request for proposals for gateway site development, staff report.
Yes, and Hector, do you mind if I get a screen sharing really quick? Actually, I was gonna show you a slide with Tom's picture in it, but you all can see Tom on the video, so I can also not have the screen share for this section. As you all know, Tom has been conducted by the agency to develop the request for proposals for developing the gateway site aligned with the community vision that's been outlined. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and hand over the the mic to Tom to give you an update of where we are in the process and his approach, and let him take it from here.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jordan, and um I appreciate being invited into this meeting and invited into kind of a consulting role. Uh, for the benefit of those of you who may not be familiar with me, I was the community development director in Central Point. From nineteen ninety eight until uh, I guess I ultimately retired in two thousand twenty twenty one. Uh, I I retired in uh January twenty twenty, but was was kept on a contract for eighteen months. Until I retired in uh June of twenty twenty one, but during that eighteen months, of course, we had the Alameda Fire and and for about seven or eight months, I uh. Was loaned to Jackson County to uh assist in some of the fire recovery um with John Vile. Um, Kelly Matting, I kind of took her role in some uh some of those responsibilities and kind of coordinating housing and so forth. And um uh became a lot better acquainted with the city of talent and Phoenix and uh in that role with Jackson County. Uh, I was um subsequently asked by uh your city manager to uh do a little coaching for your um community development director. And so I worked with Kristen for probably uh about nine to ten months, uh helping her with some um. Some of the challenges that that confronted uh the planning department and the UGB amendment and um some of the development issues that that were uh. Bigger than life, I guess, in 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 some respects. And um and then she she kind of took off. So uh at that point, Jordan asked me if I'd consider assisting um. Uh Tura with um your gateway project. Well, I um. Uh, Central Point has a community, uh has an urban renewal agency. Um, I worked a little bit with with them, you know, and and the downtown. Um, streetscape or hardscape that you now see uh was a product of the Urban Renewal Agency and and something that I worked with Chris Clayton, the city manager on and. Our finance director. And uh so I didn't, I I was pleased to to accept some role in this. I wanted to um let you know that prior to being asked by Jordan to to look at the gateway project, I. Uh, was asked to look at some of the community planning goals, um city of talent and um. I actually prepared kind of an assessment of my suggestions related to strategic planning in in talent and um. Just wanted to read something to you, just to reassure you that I'm I didn't pull a strategy out of my ear. Uh, it's something that I've been. Um, uh, working uh carefully to uh assess or determine um. Uh, that was in the that would be in the city's best interest. And so, um, you know, I I said I made some observations about themes and issue areas. That are derived from meeting attendance and those were meetings I attended with Kristen um on other planning related items. But uh listening to the community, um, interactions with council and staff that I've had over the past eighteen months. And then that um after reviewing city goals uh for and objectives for a couple of different fiscal years and my. Um, uh, my conclusions were these, that among the things people most value and ta- about talent. That may be considered as themes are the community's inclusiveness, uh wish to provide equal access to opportunity and resources. The second was solidarity and its desire for agreement of uh feeling, action, and mutual support of one another. And third was a progressive and a forward-thinking uh advocacy for social reform and environmental preservation and and innovation. And so those are things that um I talked with with Jordan about, they they kind of came up as as a part of this assessment, and they're not necessarily reflected. On the staff report that I prepared for you, but um, you know, to the degree that. You know, I reviewed the goals and objectives. I looked at at um the uh RFP that wasn't necessarily embraced or responded to positively. Um, looked at um the work that Salazar had done. So there's been kind of a wide range of. Of things that I've considered uh and was considering when I came up with a a strategy. That might help uh sell the the gateway site a little more effectively and attract people that um would really do something. And I I think my premise is that, you know, talent's got these things that they would like to see happen. Why not find. Uh, similar results elsewhere, you know, the Pacific Northwest. And then um start talking to people who were responsible for those successes. And ask them what they think about talent or or collaborating uh in the city of talent. And so that's where um. The resulting Zoom meetings with uh Bridge Housing uh came up and then Hacienda CDC more recently and um. We're not done yet, you know, we'll we'll continue to look for um. Products that were have been successful that replicate the things that I see uh the city of talent has um. Uh, expressed an interest in in uh developing at the gateway. And so I I came up with a strategy that I've. Actually outlined in the in the staff report. Um, and you'll see that um there were a number of bulleted items that uh Jordan and I talked about and. Uh, not knowing exactly where you all would like to um uh to go right away, I was kind of sent. Out to do the the web search and to identify uh potential candidates for for the website or for the gateway. Uh, area and then just talk to them, just talk to them about uh what they thought about mixed uh mixed use housing, about uh cultural identities. Um, as you might perceive from um. Uh, the things I've said about bridge housing, uh they worked with the N Star, which was a Latino organization when they created the Cornelius Place up in Cornelius, Oregon. Um, the Hacienda CDC was um an organization that the Bridge Housing Group recommended we. We pursue and consequently had a uh Zoom meeting with them and and some discussions. Uh, I've. Um, summarized the content of those discussions in a a couple of papers that I can make available to um. The uh, the board, if you wanna um kind of look over the notes that uh Jordan and I took. After communicating with those folks. Um, but I think what I would like to see happen, just to, you know, ensure that. I'm heading in the right direction and um uh that as I pursue other uh prospective candidates, or at least get ideas from people as to what. Uh, degree of success you might expect with mixed uses and and um affordable housing and um. A cultural footprint, uh I I would really like to um ask for your direction on the first couple of bulleted points. And if you'll note, the staff report that was um, you know. Catching anything I may have missed in my assessment of of your documents, uh and then uh doing uh conducting a survey of stakeholders. People that uh, you know, maybe yourselves or other people you might identify that um. Uh, go back a ways in the uh overall evaluation of of things that people would like to see happen in talent and specifically at the gateway. So. Um, haven't done that yet, haven't haven't had the uh occasion to talk to any of you specifically to see if. Uh, I'm on the right track or if I'm missing something or if everything that I've kind of chronicled in in the the documents I've sent to to Jordan are really getting it. What you want to see, because, you know, I want to, once we arrive at that place, I want to talk to people who um. Have been successful uh in in other locations and are interested in the city of talent and would contemplate responding to. An RFP uh once we prepare a new document uh that reflects your goals, values, wishes. And then have them respond and and do something. So um, that's kind of where I am. That's, I can go on a more detailed if you have questions. About um bridge housing, I think Jordan and I were really pleased with the conversation we have with them. They're very generous with their time. They recognize that uh, you know, they coming in from the outs- outside um. Are not always, you know, outside agencies are always aren't always uh well received in the Rogue Valley, you know, they're kind of. Um, uh suspect, I I suppose, in some degree. So they they acknowledge that and the importance of uh. Collaborating with local uh organizations, not stepping on other people's toes. So um they were, they were humble and respectful in that in that regard and um. And again, generous of their time and ideas and and willingness to um conduct, you know, subsequent conversations. Uh, Hacienda, same same thing. I think Jordan really got kind of enthused about our conversation with uh with those folks. Um, because of the similarities and what they do and and the families and and um. Uh, cultural distinctives that that exist in um. Uh, places they work in in exist in town. So I'll I'll close or I'll I'll shut up at that point and uh if you have some things you'd like to ask me or have questions that Jordan and I can uh. Can attempt to answer uh far away.
Thank you, Tom. Do folks have questions for Tom about the staff report? I actually had one um brief question uh in bullet point. I think it was number two. There was a reference made to uh considering a replacement for Momgren Garage. I was just wondering if you could expand on that. Um, I was a little confused by that.
Sure. Well, that that came up in one of the um. I have to go back and look at what which documentation it the Mal- Mal- Malgren Garage came up in the context of. I don't know, the Salazar's assessment or general community feeling about what was important. You know, in Central Point, we had. Historic buildings in the downtown that people wanted, you know, recognized. Mal- Malgren's garage was an old property and had some. Uh, historic significance to it, and I realize it doesn't exist anymore, but whatever that significance. Was and whatever contribution that made to the downtown is um something that maybe. I need to get a better um feel for, you know, in terms of uh either regenerating that. That business or that thought or that um that distinctive, whatever it was about Momgren Garage that was unique. That people talked about and you know, and then the name wound up in in one of the documents that I read.
And Tom, I'll jump in. Am I echoing that anyone? Okay, um, I forgot to give you the update, Tom. You captured it perfectly. If I think the modern garage references, we want the essence. Of Malgram and that's development. The good news is that that property owner has raised the funds to rebuild Malgram Garage. Um. Uh, so that is um some exciting update, Tom, and I forgot to fill you in on, I apologize.
That's good news.
Yeah, that actually explains my confusion. Um, thank you so much for updating us on that. Member Byers?
Um, yeah, I think this is a conversation of catching things up. Um, I was a little confused about the reference to a maker space at the gateway project since. TMC has purchased um land and is in the process of getting their space built. So I'm wondering if as we're considering uses of the gateway process project land if um. If other considerations that don't include a maker's space, just because it's no longer needed, um are being considered.
They certainly will be, and I I think that, again, um. Brings up the importance of doing, conducting a survey with those of you who and anyone else who you considered a stakeholder in this, because um. Is is those boxes are checked off, you mean, you can consider, you know, they're checked off elsewhere in proximity to, you can consider other things at this location. As as those boxes are checked off, you mean, you can consider, you know, they're checked off elsewhere in proximity to, you can consider other things at this location. One of the things that Hacienda does, I think they had a childcare center and one of one of their. Programs, the conversations that Kristen and Jordan I had prior to me launching into this was. You know, should we, there's three tax lots there, should those be separated at some point and just. One of them or two and be exclusively commercial and the other ones residential. Those are the types of things that. Would be helpful to get at before we create a new RFP and. So those are the things I I think I identify as needing refinement. So we can, we can go after this, but you know, it's really. What's important to the community, what makes sense? If we've got an example, and I don't know if any of you've been able to look at, if you go online and look at Bridge, look up Bridge Housing. Cornelius Place, that was an instance where that group. Collaborated with the county line where they collaborated with the city of Cornelius and then they had, I think, fifty some odd units. On a second floor of a of a library building. And then there are a couple of other uses. The housing was designed for seniors in that particular instance. Hacienda has examples where it was identified for affordable housing for Latinos. And and then they also have a kind of a business component. Jordan, I talked to them about. You know, like a market space, you know, could be incorporated as open space. So the the ideas start flowing, but this is where. Your refinement is going to be critical on this process. So we're, I'm scaring up. Viable options and people are expressing an interest in those are the. Folks I'd like to bring to you, but after maybe some refinement, just or, you know. It, I think it's. Maybe it's not necessarily a chicken and egg thing. So I've got, we've got a couple of viable candidates. That we can talk to you about to see what you think, and then you can help us determine if that is really in alignment with. The the city and tourist vision. You know, that's what I perceive to be in alignment, and that's why I've gone after them. But. You know, I think there's a, there's a lot of room for give and take in this whole process. And things to get really excited about, you know, you might, they might even have some options that you haven't considered that. You know, once you talk to some of the families that are currently residing on the property, you know, oh, yeah, if you're going to have. You know, a daycare center incorporated in that, that would really meet our needs as well, or if. You know, in Central Point, we've tried the mixed use in Ashland's, they they've tried the mixed use and and, you know, it's been a little slower. Coming into the Rogue Valley, but you know, they're, it's starting to catch on. The live work is another thing that we talked about with. Hacienda where, you know, if you've got an artisan community, they can live in the same building that they actually have a studio on the first floor for. Those are the types of things that having your. Your feedback on or refinement for could really help here. Does that answer? Answer your question too much?
It was great and it sparked more questions.
Good, well, good.
And I'm curious what sort of timeline we're looking at as we're seeking input from stakeholders.
Well, I, you know, I'm retired and even though I take these little forays into other other states. I can make myself available and, you know, Jordan can either set up meetings or Hector or. Or whomever you you elect, and I'm happy to come down and on your timeline, I'm I am kind of flexible. Unless my wife has. Scheduled me to do something that I wasn't expecting.
In Tom's contract, we did specify that. His wife does get, you know, priority and project dates. All this add on there, Tom. You know, we're looking at both access and and us as an agency agree, you know, the the best approach would be if we can develop that property. Once the gateway transitional housing program is fully wrapped up. We anticipate that to be about a year and a half longer, according to access's latest estimates. We would love to have. A developer earmarked, ready to go as soon as that property is available to break ground. Primarily because there is so much money available right now to support affordable housing. That we want to make sure that those developers can take advantage of the funding incentives that are on the table. So I would say, you know, we have up to a year to develop the RFP, but we won't, wouldn't want to post it much later than that.
And so, Jordan. I'm sorry.
Member buyers.
I was following up on my last question about the timeline. So, Jordan, when we're looking at that, when we're looking at getting stakeholder input or perhaps additional community input. And we are trying to craft an RFP to be ready by a certain go date. What sort of timeline do you see for soliciting that input as we're trying to craft everything and. Have it out in the world long enough to have some good choices when developer developers are approaching.
Yeah, and and Tom, I'll speak to this one. You know, the community has done a lot of. Inputting into the overall vision for the site. And so we're not looking for input to to just reassess or revamp that specifics. But it's more input from very specific stakeholders to help Tom and I understand what is meant in some of the the visioning efforts, for example. If there's specific community partners that we can talk to about what cultural footprint. And uniquely Latinx development means. So I imagine that could happen over a period of three months as individual one-on-one conversations. The other approach that Tom and I are taking is rather than writing an RFP that. Details to the T what we want on that site, but to write an RFP that attracts developers with the same value set. That we have for that. Because in these conversations that Tom and I have been having with Bridge Housing and with Hacienda CDC, they also do a lot of their own on the groundwork. In the shaping of their developments. And so we would like to leave the flexibility for the developer to be able to do that as well. If that's something that boards comfortable moving forward with.
Member Ponamara.
Thanks, member Perry Miller. Um, yeah, I think I think the approach is good. Going for values and and things that we that we see out there that root that match our vision and we can get into the particulars later. So my my first question is regarding the timeline. Let's say we get the RFP out, we get it awarded. Is there a period of time where there's design and and engineering and we're not, we're not breaking ground? So I'm trying to figure out how the. Because if we're looking at a year and a half where we could break ground, maybe the award would be months ahead of that to allow for a design phase is that? Or would the the design be done prior? I know we've done some architectural renderings. In the past, but I'm not sure that those still represent what we're looking for.
Yeah, so we get to specify on the RP, Tom, tell me if I'm learning correctly. Specify on the RFP, what level of design we want to be submitted for our consideration. For me, if we are able to post the RP within a year. That will automatically provide at least six months for a firm to work on those engineering and architectural drawings. Until I expect the housing program to be wound down.
Post award, right? We award the RFP because I, sorry, I'll just follow up. I think there was an expectation that some of that work would be done. Prior to the award and we found that firms were not really interested in in putting a lot of time into something like that.
Well, that that may be true and. I, my inclination would be in and Jordan, you can correct me if you don't think this is a good idea, but I, I mean, we. When we talk to Bridge Housing, they're a huge organization. And as I mentioned, they were generous with their time. One of the gentlemen said, you know, he'd be willing to look at our RFP and make some recommendations. As to how we could improve it. Now, you know, you might be suspicious. Well, that's just set them up to be, you know, the, well, they're not, they're they're this huge organization and they. My inclination would be to get advice from people who are could be helpful in that way, just to make sure that. You know, I don't have all the answers with with regard to RFPs. I've done them. Jordan's done them, but you know, get getting professional advice. That's been offered is kind of a desirable desirable thing for me and I think could help refine. The the process better for your advantages aboard. Okay. You know, Brad, what do you recommend that we do? This is Brad Melbourne, who's actually down the Bay Area and, you know, what would you, you know, what would you recommend in terms of. Setup on this thing and and how could we approach? That process. And so that would be my inclination is to see what kind of. Advantage these larger corporations can offer or even other city managers in the valley who have. Processed these or public works directors. So, you know, I'm I'm inclined to reach out and get the help we can get and the advice we can get. Where it in most cases would be free if it's offer.
Member Pizzi.
Yeah, I just want to affirm that option. I've actually done that before with RFPs and found it to be really helpful. To especially if you get more than one, you get two or three. Folks give me some feedback before the RFP. I I thought that really helped in my cases.
Member Ponamar.
Thank you. Um, so. I'm just wondering about Bridge, I think is a is a great choice. It sounds like Hacienda is very much in alignment too, and it sounds like you guys had really good conversation. So those are two great candidates. I'm a little curious about the third candidate, how that name came to y'all and also whether another. Nonprofit mission-driven. Group that we had talked to in the past is Neighbor Works. Out of Roseburg, I think. I'm just wondering if if that came up at all as well.
Well, actually, yeah, Jordan pits these two additional to me and I've. Only begun to do kind of a background search. You may or may not know, but I I was in Roseburg for four years before I moved to. Central Point and worked with Betty Tam, Betty and Paul Tam before he passed. And Betty was actually the manager that CDC. Well, it was a CDC when, you know, it. Originated about, it was probably about three years before I started working at the. Council of Governments in in Roseburg. So I'm familiar with her operation and. The the preliminary research I've done on them suggested, you know, they're, they they've had some difficulties in their management. There's been a little bit of a turnover. I don't know that they're, I think they're kind of getting their feet back under them. So I I'll have to do a little additional research on on that one. And then I'm prepared to. To look at. I I actually copied the mission. And overview of Northwest Housing Alternatives. And I thought I'd do a little research on that one and talk to. Talk to some of those folks, but those were, you know, I I found Bridge Housing, Bien Star and Hacienda through the my own web search, looking at. Results. These other operations I haven't, they I'll have to do a little further research on the results. And let you know what I find out.
So, Jordan, what do you need from us?
Before I jump into that, I do think better phenomena have another question.
Oh, member Ponamara. Sorry, I thought your hand was just still raised from before.
No, I I I just kind of wanted to follow up. I I just heard to say, I remember, I think I I actually Googled around the first time I went through the RFP and found Bridge. And thought that would be a great match. So, yeah, this is not to to discourage you away from two really good candidates. I did wanted to ask a question in the bulleted list. On number two. Survey stakeholders determine how interested and or serious the community is about targeting missing middle housing. And I'm wondering if that the missing middle as opposed to. More to the spectrum side of low income, more and more towards market. Because I, you know, I think we were. We have been, it's been kind of a mix of workforce and and lower income in in the past. So I'm just was wondering where that question. What you were aiming for.
Yeah, well, the missing middle came up in one of some of the documents I've I've. Reviewed and you'll know. Missing middle sometimes refers, it's not necessarily missing income, but. Missing middle is those housing types that. Kind of fall between apartments on one extreme and single family detached on another. And so if you're looking at housing types in the gateway. You know, the the preliminary documents that we have show apartments, possibly townhouses. Live, work or mixed use where you've got apartments above commercial operations. And so the missing middle is simply, you know. How do we want these housing units to look? I mean, do we want to have fourplexes? Do we want to have homes that look like? You go to Medford and and Ashland and you see the missing middle there that the. Planning directors identifier, you know, there are these old, either Victorian homes or or classic. What do I say? Sorry, memory loss, your brief memory loss. They they could be Victorian, they could be more conventional housing from the. Thirties, forties and fifties, but they've been turned into apartments so that they've got, you know, maybe two or three units in them. So that's the, that's the only thing about missing metal is just what do you want those. Housing mixes to look like in this small area, you know, and if it's expanded later on to other properties, TID or what have you in the future. What do you want those to look like? Do you want them all to be apartments? Do you want, you know, combination? Do you want any single family detached? I don't think that'll work there, but. Those are questions we'll have to answer when we. Hacienda, I think, brought up the question, well, what's the zoning there, you know, and will the zoning accommodate? You know, two and three story buildings, four story buildings, because they're looking at return on their investment and and. Cost per square foot and that sort of thing. So. The missing middle could just be, you know, triplexes or or conventional looking homes that have multiple units in them.
And thanks, thanks for reminding me that that's what missing middle was. I I had that lesson and forgot it a couple of years back.
Member buyers.
Thank you, Mr. Perry Miller. I'm wondering if, Tom, you could speak a little bit to the local partners that. Hacienda CDC is already working with.
Yeah, with, well, and and Jordan can can jump in here too. We were, we were delighted to find that they have already been working with Casa and. There's going, they're actually going to be delivering a building here. If I'm not mistaken, a modular home sometime later this month, which will give us an opportunity to talk to them directly, but. Nobody really knew it was Hacienda, you know, pulling the strings in the background, but they were working with Hacienda, I think, to put together a mortgage, if I'm not. Mistaken, Jordan, or some sort of funding to assist and. And so in both the case of Hacienda and Bridge Housing, they they stress the importance of working with a. A local collaborator and not coming in. Under their own auspices and Hacienda has been working with Casa. They would work with. The Housing Authority of Jackson County, for instance, or. One of the Latino organizations. That's kind of where where both of them came from. Jordan, do you have any other? Anything else to add to that?
No, so it was fun. The very first question that Hacienda asked us, they love, they asked us a question first before we even. Asked any of our questions was, what is the community vision? And how can we support that? So it was very just a cool, a cool approach that conversation had. And I will say, so for next steps, Vice Chair Paramiller, as you had asked, you know, Tom and I right now, we're working on identifying potential partners who might be interested in A, helping us develop the RFP to be able to track what we hope to achieve. Or B, would be willing to apply themselves to if we were to post an RFP and would want to develop down here. My comfort level is that if we get at least two folks that we know are willing to apply for such a project, to then start working out the details of the actual RFP. So Tom and I are still in the phase of trying to drum up that interest and understand that there's a market out there or not. And then we'll come back to you all as we start nailing to the details of the RFP language itself. And that'll be a lot of that stakeholder involvement to make sure we're reflecting things adequately. And that we're reflecting things that have changed. As we know, fire rebuild, things change in real time. So just double, always double checking along the way.
Thank you, Jordan. Member Panamera.
Thanks. And did Bridge and Hacienda indicate they might have, you know, availability a year from now? And in the meantime, tell us to help us out.
Yeah. So Hacienda was very interested in being able to apply for an RFP when it comes out. They have been looking to expand to other counties. And they've been such close partners with CASA, so they're very familiar with talent through the work they've been doing this past year. I believe Hacienda has also just recently started fabricating homes that they, they're the ones that are working with Port of Portland for creating modular homes. So they're looking to help many communities increase the housing. Bridge Housing said that seemed less interested in applying for the RFP, but very interested in helping support us and developing the RFP. Which is good because if someone works really closely with us to develop the RFP, it does make them ineligible to apply.
Did you say eligible? Sorry, did you say ineligible?
Yes. It would, it potentially could give someone a competitive advantage if they were to write the RFP with us and then apply themselves.
Thank you. I did not know that. That's good to know. Any further questions for Jordan or Tom? Thank you. Oh, member Panamera.
Sorry, just that last bit kind of gave me pause. And I'm just wondering how, you know, careful do we have to be? It would be kind of a bummer to work with a really good firm in terms of, you know, getting advice to develop an RFP and, and find out that they, they could not apply. As a result of that, is that, is that kind of a, kind of a, I don't know, how, how, how's that, how does that work?
Well, I think Jordan and I can revisit this together. And before I leap into action here, maybe it would be advisable just to, to go to some of our local, our local folks, other city managers, urban renewal directors and our public works folks and just get their input before, without launching into conversations with, you know, potential candidates. Then we won't disqualify anybody.
And I will say our conversations we're having right now, just to better understand what these different developers do. And to talk about our vision, to make sure our vision aligns with what they do elsewhere. It's one to get involved in crafting the details of the RFP that you do want to be careful. And so I'm grateful we have Tom on the team with his experience in, in pushing these things forward. And looking forward to identifying some more groups that might be interested so we can move to this next step of that RFP development.
Member Panamera.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I think that the great thing about working with these mission-driven folks is this is, this is the kind of work that, that we need to have happen. And I think a lot of the, you know, the traditional development of, you know, market housing is, is, it's different from, from what we're doing here in talent. So yeah, I, I, I would, I would encourage us not to be overly cautious. In this regard, I think that getting, finding out what's happening in other places and what these firms are doing wouldn't be a conflict. And I, and I hope we would learn as much as we can from them prior to actually crafting of the RFP. So I, I wouldn't want us to deprive ourselves of that education by being overly cautious.
Seems like we're in very good hands. Okay, anything further? Thank you, Tom, for being with us.
My pleasure. And I'll look forward to, you know, subsequent meetings and, and hopefully be able to visit with each of you independently and and stand by Jordan and let me know what you want me to do next.
That sounds great.
I'm gonna sign off. Yeah, thanks. Talk to you later.
Okay, and then there were six. So let me go back to this agenda. I'm working off of one screen, so please be gentle. There he is.
It was a great photo, so I had to show the slide.
That is fabulous. Thank you, Jordan. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is for point two. Fiscal year 2024 goals discussion, staff report.
Yes. So Tess and I are beginning to develop the budget for Tura for this coming fiscal year. And so I want to check in with the board to make sure we're aligning our budget with the goals and programs that you guys really want to move forward in the coming year. There are a couple of really big ticket price items, so those are ones I definitely want to focus on tonight's conversation, but also just open it up for brainstorming and sharing so that we can start incorporating that into the budget document. I do want to highlight some potential goal areas that were outlined in the staff report. Those include repaying a loan that we currently have, paying for the SDC charges at the gateway site, which are currently temporarily waived. Any potential property acquisitions, continuation or new grant programs, and then of course, special projects. So I'll turn up to you to, to ask any questions on those specific areas or to brainstorm things that you all would like to see happen next fiscal year.
Thank you, Jordan. Questions, thoughts? Brilliant ideas? So this is more of just an informal discussion, right, Jordan? You don't need a motion or anything?
No motion. This is just an informal discussion. And, and if the discussion is continue business as currently occurring, then that works for me too. And that'll just be continuing what we're focusing on to the next year. But I do believe number Panamera has their hand up as well.
Member Panamera.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so I have a question about the OHCS loan. Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there, is there a possibility of that being? It sounds like we have, we have some time. But is there the possibility that that might be repurposed in some way with, with, in some way with, with OHCS? I, I guess maybe the right question is, have you talked to OHCS about this? Gotten advice from them about what might be the best way forward for us?
Yeah. So, and before you all, I just put a summary of what that, the loan terms are for you all to see. The loan agreement is specific to developing the Gateway Project to support the traditional housing program. The program of what we got those loans through, we would not be able to use them for any other purpose besides any development on the Gateway Project to help support the transitional housing program. The question was brought up several months ago of if there's anything needed at the gateway site that we could use the loan to help develop it to A, support the folks living there, but B, also make it more attractive for future development. And really there's no identified construction projects for that. You know, an option could be the SDCs. This loan could help pay for the SDCs because they are related to the development of the site. My concern with using this loan is largely around that we have no revenue coming in. And so we would repay the loan either when we sell the gateway site, so we'd be required to sell it for at least the amount of the loan to be able to recoup, to pay off our loan. Or B, we would have to make sure we keep enough in the bank to do a full loan pay.
Member Panamera, did you have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, just to follow up. So, so it's, it's something that we can, we can wait a little bit longer before making a decision on there's, we continue to, we're, we're raising the interest that we would be paying back, correct?
Yes, at this point, the, the interest rate that we get from just keeping our money in the savings account covers the annual cost of the loan of interest accrued. There will be some associated closing costs, but they are minimal in comparison to the size of the loan.
Great. Thanks so much, Jordan.
Yeah.
Member buyers.
I think you just answered my question. Thank you.
So is there anything, my question to the board is, is there anything that you'd like to continue or focus on that is different than what we're currently focusing on as an agency?
Member buyers.
Well, I do have a question about the SDCs. So the idea of passing them on to a developer, what sort of impact do you think that will have on developer interest for that site?
That's a great question. You know, the tot, the total SDC amount is roughly 750,000 to 800,000. And so you can think of it as almost gap financing for any developer, where that would be $800,000 that they wouldn't have to come up with or find on their own. The amount of gap financing needed for the type of development we're looking at admittedly is substantially larger. More probably in the four to five million dollar range for a project of that size. So it is attractive, but I think it will need to come with other funding packages and in and of itself would not be the sole determinant if someone applies or not applies.
Member buyers.
Follow-up question. Have you identified any potential additional funding that would support that at this point in time?
For that gap financing? It depends if a new urban renewal district goes through. So that has designed incentive programs to help support both affordable housing as well as commercial builds. The peer program that is launching is with that HUD funding, the CDBGDR money. That peer program can be used for site development, either for housing or business, commercial related. The struggle with that funding is that it does come with federal requirements. So environmental reviews, prevailing wage, et cetera. And then of course, the governor's proposed budget and emphasis on housing has made additional funds available, particularly for affordable housing development.
Member buyers.
Sorry, final follow-up question. Do you see any, do you foresee any big issues? I'm, I'm space, I'm losing my words. Meeting the federal requirements for that space?
I think it depends on developer selected. So if we do select developer that specializes in affordable housing, they almost always work or have to work with federal money because we're using federal housing credits. Therefore, they are completely used to dealing with federal money and meeting all federal reviews. If we go for a smaller scale developer that does not work federal funds, yes, it could be a particularly higher burden.
Member Ponamara.
So the number that you were talking about, the four or five million dollar gap, is that the cost of the project? Or the difference between the cost of the project and?
Financing, likely, likely financing.
So what, what are you thinking about the cost of the project? What's the ballpark?
So for example, when I talked to, when Tom and I talked to Hacienda CDC and we said, you know, we recognize just having crap here available isn't always the only barrier for you all. If you were able to do mixed development, specifically because commercials cost so much more to develop than housing, what kind of gap financing would you need to support the commercial? And looking at the square footage available, they said likely four to five million. We would look for to help support the development of commercial, since most of the financing available is specific to housing.
So that is, is that with the presumption of either renting the commercial or selling the commercial?
I did not ask that question. I will say system development charges may at one point be out of our hands. We technically received a waiver from Medford Water Commission through March 10th of this year. So we're actually outside that waiver period. I will be requesting to their board to grant us another extension. But it will be up to them of when they would like to collect on the SDCs, the meters and solve that site. And then it'll be the same with the City of Talent as well.
Other questions or thoughts? Member Ponamara.
Yeah, so I think another thing that we'll be pursuing, excuse me, in 2024 will be the RFP, right?
Yeah, the gateway development.
Yep, sorry. Yeah, the gateway development. Is that going to be a, maybe that's just not a large enough budget item to worry about at this point?
No, that will, we will earmark that one for sure. Yeah. The grant programs that I will look to continue will be the revitalization grant program, which is the business facade program as well as the tree planting program that has been established. And you know, my recommendation on system development charges would be, let's earmark enough to pay back Medford Water Commission in the event that we don't receive an extension on our waiver or if that waiver runs out. In terms of the development of that site. So right now there are 53 individual water meters to each trailer site as well as one large irrigation meter. Now I would recommend leaving the irrigation meter as a permanent installation on that site. But those 53 meters, the city will ask to be removed at the end of the program. Because per our code, any multifamily living, whether it be an apartment building or manufactured home park, we do require just one large meter rather than individually meters on each unit. And so those meters can be brought back into the city and then, and then used for future development. And that will significantly reduce SDC charges as well.
Member Panamera.
Yeah, just a quick question. Is that best practice to, to have just one?
It is. There's a lot of technology out there where people could have their own meters on the other side of the city-owned meter. But it reduces our time required to read meters, service meters and keep track of water usage that way.
Great. Thanks, Jordan.
Perfect. Well, that is enough for me to go on. Oh, sorry.
One more, member buyers.
Sorry. I would be curious, just as looking at this outline, I would be curious about properties that you have earmarked as potentially a good acquisition for Tura. And I would like to know more about those properties or if there aren't any, I'd love to know. And I would like to know more about those properties, or if there aren't any, I'd love to know. Why WhatsApp there isn't working for us, um, just as a informative. Component of all of this um on my part.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan.
Great. Jordan, do you have enough to go on with that?
I do. I do. Thank you.
Perfect. So next we have item four point three, updates on general agency business, staff report.
Yeah, I just want to give you all just some brief updates, so you know what's going on um behind the scenes. We are working on travel trailer registration. Um, with the DMV, so that is getting all those travel trailers registered. The struggle is we have to get each one individually registered. Um, so it's just a lot of paperwork processing that we're going through and. Turns out DMVs are even difficult to communicate with as an agency, not just as an individual. Um, so we're working through those hoops. I am submitting a request for an extension on the SDCs to both Midford Water Commission as well as the City of Talent. I hope to get that on the May agendas for both boards. Business revitalization grant, um, you all approved, we implore that grant, but just due to staff capacity on our end, we have not been able to get it off the ground. So I've reached out to Talent Business Alliance to see if they would be willing and interested to host that grant on their website. And to help get the information out to businesses and technical assistants for filling out the form. And they have really graciously said yes, and so I hope to get that up in the next week or two. Um, so that we can get businesses applying for it and getting money in their hands to do some good things on their properties. Um.
Panamara?
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear which grant.
It's our business revitalization grant. This is gonna be up to fifteen thousand dollars uh for property improvements.
Great, thanks.
And those are for businesses that were affected by the fire. Is that right, Jordan?
It's for any business within the Tura boundary, but priority is being given to those businesses impacted by the fire that are working to repair. Specific impacts especially.
Thank you.
Um, Tessa and I are working along on the budget. Just so you all know, we will host the budget committee meetings for Tura, parallel to the city budget committee meetings. Um, so it will be a technically separate meeting, but we will ha- hold them back to back. Um, so that we don't have to over-schedule you all. Uh, the title of structural assessment, um, I know you all have heard through the lens of city council. Um, this was the, one of the Tura's activities, and so you all will be receiving the structural assessment report as well. And we are working on closing out our fiscal year twenty-two audit with our auditors. And I will say, uh, member buyer's question about property, just raise a quick question I'd love to field with all of you, because this came across my desk this week. And, um. Oh, I just said I'm not screen sharing with you all, so I apologize for that. I've been reading off a slide that you all can't see. Tura owns strips of property along Main Street downtown. It's about a fifteen-foot strip that I believe we purchased um for the creation of sidewalks and planter beds. Particularly, it's on those properties across from Camelot. Um. Does the agency have any interest in using those strips? And, and the reason I'm asking is because a property owner asked us, since they are looking to submit. Um, for a permit for site plan review and wondering if they could use that fifteen-foot or purchase that fifteen-foot buffer. From Tura um for use in their design.
Really quick, are you talking about the pizza oven side of the street or the other side?
I'm gonna pull up an image so you all can see exactly where we own the properties.
Was that your question, member buyers?
You guys don't want to place your raise with me on Zoom to see where those properties are?
It's along Main across from the Camelot. I think we were calling it the promenade. And we were talking about lining it with trees and benches as you walk to the theater.
Hmm, we do have a. I've been referring to the wrong thing as the promenade, is what I just learned from that comment.
I think there's, there's potentially multiple places that are called the promenade.
It's just a city of promenades.
Promenade city. So these, these frontage strips here are owned by Tura. And I'm just curious if, if there's any vision or intention for those strips. Um, or who would like them to become part of the frontage of the development downtown.
Member buyers?
I can't speak to that, but I am curious as to what the property owners um who are interested in purchasing those strips have communicated what they'd like to do with them.
Yeah, so for one of the, the one I know about, and I'll just offer you, this was just a relaxed conversation, they're figuring out what they want to do. They're interested in doing a mixed use, so commercial and residential both. Um, and they would like to have a, that area just to help have more landscaping area, have more room to uh. Develop with setbacks, et cetera.
I feel like my memory is telling me that member Clark had some better institutional knowledge than I do. As far as what the thought was about those sections of property, maybe even before the fire. Is that sounding right to you, member Panamara?
Yes. Um, and, and I think also the mayor would also um have a, a lot more institutional knowledge on that as well. But yeah, we were um thinking that it could really um be a chance to set an aesthetic. Uh, for that, for that area. Um, but to councillor, to member buyer's point, if. Uh, a private owner were to do something that's, you know, some nice landscaping. Um, I, I think we were talking about, I, I was trying to advocate for benches for folks to. To be able to rest, um, which is something I hear a lot from uh our disabled and community and seniors. Um, that, that there aren't enough places just to sit and rest as, as you stroll. Um. So if, if, if that were a. Part of, i- if it were compatible, if it were a compatible vision, I think that would be um a good, great conversation to have.
Okay, I will follow up uh with the chair and with member Clark. Um, to get their thoughts as well. And go from there.
Great. Thank you for pulling that up, Jordan. I'm a visual person, so that's very helpful.
Um, to help with this visual, any further questions on the, the things I mentioned, and now are both pointed in front of you all?
Looks good. Okay. So, thank you, Jordan. Um, the next item is item number five, items from the chair or board members. Does anyone have anything for this? I'm not seeing any hands, so we'll move on. Item number six is written communication. There is none. And then moving on to item number seven, which is adjournment. Okay, so it is seven oh nine, and if there isn't anything else, we will adjourn this meeting. Alright, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks so much.
Excellent job, member Perry Miller.
Thank you.
Yeah.